Okay, good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of the North Liberty Planning Commission to order Tuesday, March 3rd, 2021. Roll call. Oh.
I apologize. I heard. Backy. Heisler.
Here.
Yo.
Here.
Marx. Pentecost.
Here.
Staber.
Here.
Right, we're a small but mighty crew tonight. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Staber, second by Heisler, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, looks like agenda item number three. A request to approve a preliminary plat on property located on the west side of North Liberty Road. Staff presentation.
I don't know if I had this on the agenda now and I forgot, do we need to approve the agenda? And maybe I left.
I think we just did that, right?
Or did we? I apologize that I missed it.
Yep.
It shows you where I am.
I've been known to miss some things, so I like to double check.
Appreciate that. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Okay, so this is a preliminary plat for 130 lots. Related infrastructure approximately 58 acres. I'm sure you know, but I'll just say that preliminary plat is really the first step in the process of generally laying out subdivision improvements. So this is kind of, shows you the location of the preliminary plat. You'll notice a bite's been taken out of it and I'll catch you up to speed on that in a second. Property is currently zoned ID, but there is a request, as you know, to rezone the property to RS6. Landing Commission consider that on February 2nd. Commission recommended approval, council approved first reading of the ordinance at February 23rd meeting, so we've got second reading next week and we should be through the process by the end of March. Again, here's that bite that's kind of taken out of the preliminary plat. The developer has submitted a subsequent rezoning request to change this to an RD10, which is a basically duplex zero lot line subdivision. So you will be looking at the the rezoning for that portion and the preliminary plat in April. Here is the future land use map, future land use map designation on the comprehensive plan is residential. So the RS6 is consistent with the residential land use. And so just to kind of go back over the preliminary plat, the, we went over this with the rezoning, but some of the general comments that we had with the neighborhood meeting. And again, it was on December 29th. Very well attended, very snowy day. But general configuration of the plat, phasing, subdivision covenants, methods to control speeding or as we call it, traffic calming and construction traffic. And we'll, I'll talk about that when we get to the preliminary plat. So we review preliminary plats, we look at it in accordance with subdivision code, which is preliminary plats is 180.113A. We also review it in accordance with our design standards, 180.12. And so that, that's what we judge our recommendation on. Okay, so here is the configuration, hasn't changed much since I've shown it to you. It shows Berkshire Lane coming through and terminating in cul-de-sac. Originally Berkshire Lane came through and, and connected down here to North Liberty Road. So we share the concern with residents that that could be lead to speeding and cut through traffic. So we think this'll, this'll help kind of traffic calm. The other way is the connection along Hemingway. We kind of looked at possibly doing traffic circles in here, but we just didn't have enough solid of a design to really ask an engineer to design something. And our streets department had an issue with that, being able to get trucks around. So we've seen a couple of their communities like Iowa City kind of experiment with this. We're just not comfortable yet that the design is further enough, far enough along that we're comfortable implementing it. So up here along Hemingway, we kind of tightened up this radius a little bit. And we're hoping as, as this is the school board property, they'll develop in about three to five years, depending on growth in this area. But we're really hoping that there's an opportunity to maybe implement a full traffic circle here, maybe at their driveway entrance. So this is another opportunity, I think, for where we can provide traffic calming. Let's see here. Kind of think it's good to maybe take a step back and see how this fits in the context of the greater kind of greater planning. So this is kind of the subdivision that you see here. This is Hemingway, it's, it's proposed on our land use map to be a collector. Fits in well with the school board property, but you know, as, as you look down here, a green belt trail stubbed out a road as well as Donovan Estates, they provided stubs. So it just, these are, these are in no way, shape or form vital yet, these are just kind of some preliminary designs that we've talked about of how this area could be developed. So you could see this road, we continue down and connect to Dubuque Street and those tie in there as well as above, up north and how that'll eventually develop. And so another opportunity is to kind of traffic calm instead of having these three across just kind of terminated in here and make it, make it a little bit more windy for folks. I know at the rezoning, we had a discussion about kind of lot sizes, so I wanted to, we got the finalized preliminary plat, take a look at lot sizes. So the RS6 zoning again requires a lot width of 70 feet and a lot area of 7,000 square feet. RS4 is 80 feet a lot width and 10,000 square feet of lot area. So actually 97 of the lots meet the size requirements for RS4, so they are larger than what RS4 requires, which I think makes it more compatible with the Arlington Ridge subdivision there. And the ones in red are the ones that are smaller and they're, they're smaller by marginal means. They, they just have a little bit of width or they're just barely below 10,000. But I just, I think that gives you an idea of staff's comfort level that this kind of fits in and is compatible with the area. Again, you're gonna see this area, this cul-de-sac forthcoming, but obviously it doesn't dive south here and connect down to Osage Lane. So it's worth discussing, we don't always like to see cul-de-sacs, but they are permitted. If you have limited connection points to arterial roads and that's what North Liberty Road is. They're further constricted, the fact that you can't really have a street grid up here because you have a future elementary school site. And there's a decent amount of grade change that happens here. And so you essentially be creating a hill of a road for, that really could be avoided. And so for that purpose, we, we agree that a cul-de-sac could be warranted here. We didn't really see in any of the preliminary designs that a cul-de-sac was proposed and in the our location because you can really conform to that more traditional street grid as you move north. Talked about traffic calming measures. Talk a little bit about the pedestrian trail. They are proposing a pedestrian trail that connects to the Dubuque Street Trail. Would come along the south side of Arlington Ridge subdivision as well as this subdivision kind of go north along Seven Oaks on the north side of Berkshire Lane and connect into the school board property. We think that's a great opportunity to, to have an east-west connection between the north, the future forthcoming North Liberty Road Trail and the Dubuque Street Trail. So really looking to add that to our, what I call our primary trail network. I've talked to the school board about incorporating that into the design, they had no issue with that at all. The other thing you see on here is the fire road access, fire road access, or what do we call secondary fire road access is required by the fire department when you're over 30 lots. Phase one here is only 30 lots, so we're asking that to be removed, but you will see it when, when this comes in. Generally speaking, with respect to phasing, this would be the, the first phase over here. And then it would move west over here. You would then have that secondary connection and then these would be the subsequent. So I know some of the residents of Arlington Ridge did have some concerns of, they'd like to see it connect from east to west and, and that's what the current proposal is. We think that the subdivision covenants will be similar to the Arlington Ridge subdivision, so there shouldn't be much change there. Construction entrance access will be from North Liberty Road, they've committed to that. And so we, we think we've really kind of taken into consideration all of the concerns. We feel this is a good design. We go back to. And so we, the staff, we, we find that the preliminary plat with conditions recommended by city staff achieves consistency with section 180.113A and section 180.12, North Liberty Code of Ordinances would set forth preliminary subdivision plat requirements and design standards and required improvements respectively. And so we do recommend approval, the preliminary plat subject to three conditions. Legal description and acreage be updated to reflect portion that's taken out. The temporary fire access be removed from the preliminary plat. And the outlots for the pedestrian trail be updated for, and just to say pedestrian trail only. Ownership maintenance and any cost sharing will be reflected in the final plat. I just would like to mention that the developer is asking the city to partner in some of the cost of the trail. So we're kind of still working through that issue, we just didn't feel it was appropriate to put who is responsible for each aspect of it on a preliminary plaque because we're still working out those details. Those are more appropriate to be reflected on a final plat and developers agreement. So what we recommend is that the planning commission accept a listed finding and forward the recommendation to the city council with the recommendation for approval subject to the three conditions recommended by city staff. And I can stop sharing or go back to the preliminary plat, whatever, whatever you'd like.
I think keeping your screen up is fine because I think you have some additional screens that maybe we don't have in our packet, so okay, we can leave it up for now. Yeah, thank you for that, Ryan. Was there an applicant, applicant presentation this evening?
Yes, the, there is, the applicant is here today.
Great.
Susan?
Susan Fornash from Hall and Hall Engineers. Ryan pretty much covered everything, I don't really have much to add. The developer is agreeable to the three conditions that staff has placed on the preliminary plat. And I can answer any questions that any of the commission members may have regarding the project.
Thanks, Susan, we'll call your name if we have any questions.
Okay.
Ryan, were there any other comment, public comments added?
No, so we, we had the neighborhood meeting, as I mentioned, the 29th, very well attended, but, but, and I, I talked to one or two people in the Arlington Ridge subdivision subsequent to that, but no formal objections. And the phone conversations I have is mostly the people that live on what is a dead end street being like, for instance, Berkshire Lane. That, you know, that, that would be their preference to delay that connection as long as possible. And I, I think that's happening and, and you know, one of the things I'll say about the temporary fire access is, you know, it would be easy just to say, okay, well, we'll just do this as our next phase and connect these over with the developers doing and work through the fire department was this will be the initial phase, we'll create a secondary access over here so that therefore we don't have to make this connection at this time and it'll come at a later time.
Thank you. Questions and comments from the commission?
Hey, Ryan, can you, can you walk me through the change to the zoning and why, how that came about? I mean, because you know, it was just a month ago that we, we zoned everything to to just single family residential and, and now we're seeing this, this change. I mean, I, I was comfortable with, with how it was rezoned, I'm not sure how I feel now.
Yeah, and so that rezoning request is still moving through to city council. And so we anticipate that it would get rezoned to RS6 and you know, next month, you're just gonna consider this as a, as a separate request. It's my understanding to the developer and Susan can correct me is, is, you know, the, the Scanlins are, are land developers and not necessarily home builders. And so they'll build all this road infrastructure and utilities and then sell the lots to the builders. So I, is my understanding, he has a builder that, that wants to build a two-family product on this end. And so that was the reason for the change. So they halted that portion of the preliminary plat because it, it hadn't gone to you yet. But you're gonna have to consider that rezoning and preliminary plat in its own merits.
Is the, the developer going to keep this plan as is on the part that we're reviewing today? Regardless of whether or not the rezoning passes on the gray area there?
Yeah, so what would happen, I mean, if, if the, let's say for instance, that the RD10, the two-family was, was not approved. Then the, this would remain RS6 and they could submit a subsequent subdivision plat that met the RS6 standards. It may be that, that these lots actually by themselves, what we do for two-family subdivisions is we do the overall parent parcel and when they build the two-family home, then we do like a plat of survey basically because we know where the, now we know where the middle of the building is. So this would essentially come in as its own preliminary plat as, you know, as RS6 with a cul-de-sac.
Okay, and then last time we talked about the cul-de-sac being a strategy to control traffic. However, by a school, was there any thought about spillover parking in case at this elementary school, there was an event? And also, you know, the, the additional traffic that may create, you know, on the, the road to the south here.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, we, I'm part of a, our, our traffic committee and Kevin is as well. And we, we see a lot of complaints about where people park adjacent to schools and things. And I, I don't really think this lends itself so much, it might, that people park on the street here. People are pretty creative when it comes to that kind of stuff. But you know, we, we just kind of have to do the best we can with, with road design. And again, I'll just reiterate that, that this road kind of did cut through here and we, we thought this was one opportunity to kind of have a tee here and have somebody make a 90-degree angle. I think some of the concerns that you mentioned, I think we'll, we'll, we'll have to work with the school board and try and get a design that I think incorporates traffic calming and, and those types of issues when, when, when the school site actually comes in. But we, we kind of think from a preliminary design, it, it's gonna fit pretty well with, with whatever the, the school design will be. Because it'll, it should provide access off of this main road into this site. And so we, we think it lays out pretty well.
Yeah, yeah, the, the primary access will be Hemingway. I do know that, you know, staff's gonna recommend parking on one side of these streets only. We've been doing that pretty consistently with all the subdivisions, whether there's a school there or not. And like, like Ryan was saying, yeah, it, it's hard with an elementary school and special events and people will probably have to spill over park on, on some of the public streets at some time. But I think the parking on one side will help.
So when we look at this next month, the RS6 zoning will have gone through, correct? Okay.
Yep, we anticipate that the rezoning will be final reading at the fourth Tuesday of, of the council cycle. And so by the time you consider it, the request will be from RS6 to RD10. And you'll just be looking at this, this gray area here.
Yeah, just that area. Does a rezoning then trigger a community meeting or?
So what happens is, is the, when this originally came in, this was for multifamily here. And so that was represented at the neighborhood meeting. And so what happens is, is when a developer prior to submitting an application is required to have a neighborhood meeting, I'm, I'm of the opinion that that's already happened. And again, this is, this is a, this was originally proposed to be multifamily. And, and so when the application came in, it came in as RS6 and now the change is RD10. So I, I don't think it's anything more intense that was originally discussed at the, at the neighborhood meeting on, on December 29th.
My question about that though is that we have the land use plan in, like, you know, last time it passed to adjust it to be something different than what was on the land use plan. So now this is going to be even a couple more steps from that. So do we need to reevaluate the, the land use plan? I mean, if, if that isn't our roadmap for where we're going, I mean, if it's inaccurate or is it just because the developer's trying to fit more lots in? I mean, like, would it, you know, from a city, from the perspective of growing the city and, and planning this out correctly, what is the correct approach there?
Well, when you say land use plan, I mean, the land use plan is very general for this area, so it's, it's residential. And so in theory, any residential zoning would be compatible or consistent, I should say, with the future land use map. And so in that light, we look at any residential zoning is, is consistent. So you know, once we move past that, then what we look at is, is, is the proposed zoning, whatever it's being requested, compatible with the area. And so when we went through the rezoning for RS6, I spent quite a bit of time discussing, you know, is, is RS6 compatible with the area? And I felt it was because we had RS6 to the south, we had some RS6 to the west. So you know, when I, when, when we do an analysis here, I'm, I'm confident that I'm gonna say RD10 is, is consistent with the future land use map, which is residential. But most of the analysis is gonna come down to, is the RD10 compatible with this area? And you'll be, you'll be tasked with answering that as well.
But just to reiterate, tonight, we're not looking at that area, we're just looking at the rest of this, right?
That's correct.
I did have a question, I zoomed in, those are, all these roads have sidewalks, right, on both sides? Okay.
Yeah, and actually the Hemingway has six-foot sidewalks currently in Arlington Ridge and those would be continued along Hemingway as they extend east. But everything else has a five-foot sidewalk on the west side of Seven Oaks would be that eight-foot path. And then it turns along the north side of Berkshire and then continues in this outlot here, that would be all eight feet.
Because that, that was the intersection you were just at, that you, that there was a traffic circle considered, but not going in that direction. I'm just thinking about, I know we're, you know, maybe five years ahead of this now, but students walking on the path, trying to get to the elementary school, just concerned about that intersection for them. Again, that's something five years from now, something can be done, but.
Yeah, and, and we really, we, we really looked at a couple of these intersections here and and really thought about that, you know, it would be ideal if we could have this trail run along the south side here, continue kind of through this area here and then, and then maybe there's just one crossing here. But this is, this is a drainage way and it drops significantly, so there's really not an opportunity unless we built a bridge or, you know, a large culvert or something like that to, to cross this area. So we tried to minimize those crossings and, and we tried to keep the wide path on kind of the side yards and, and outside of anybody's front yard to minimize conflicts of, you know, with driveways.
Thank you.
So Ryan and Kevin, I mean, getting back to that walking path and bike path, is, was there consideration to potentially just have it go east-west and, and use that drainage area as a, as a location to put the path as a, as, you know, something other than just a, a water basin and, and grass in that area? I mean, you, you see those, you, those, you see bike paths in, in those areas in many other communities. I just, I, I thought at one point, but there had been some discussion with the, the, the original Green Belt Trail Part One, that they were looking at putting a, a bike path through some of that drainage area that I, I don't, you know, there's nothing here, so was there any consideration for that?
Kevin, you want to tackle that? I pretty soon this has to do with a little bit more engineering.
Well, I, I think that they did originally when this was first a concept, is that correct, Ryan? But I think the issue is the, the topography and it was pretty limited area. Didn't they also, I think they also came to the city to see about if the city would take that over and possibly somehow design bike trails through there. But I don't think it was very well received by city staff. I don't know how much, how much actual design work went into laying out shared use paths through there, but I, I know it's pretty tight and, and at least with the area we have right now and with all the, the different detention basins throughout that, it, it probably would be very difficult to put it in. It's really not, by the time you, you look at all the different ponds in there and then the backyard, there's really not a whole lot of room. Especially if it's eight or 10 foot wide or shoulders.
Yeah, I just think it's, it's a, a missed opportunity to, to, you know, put some nice trails through some areas that, that are just gonna be unused. Because I know that those areas are, are very much appreciated in other communities. And it's just something that I think North Liberty is lacking. And I would have, I would have really liked to have seen something like that in, in the city to move forward with that. So I just want to put that out there.
Are there any other questions or comments from the commission? Okay. I have to get to the right screen here, but may I have a motion for our recommendation to city council? I don't know what happens next if we don't have a motion.
Does there need to be some additional discussion? I mean, Kylie or Jason, I mean, do you have questions or concerns?
I'd be happy to give a motion except I've been struggling with the PDF for this packet all day.
I've had the same problem, it freezes for me mid, mid scrolling.
I'm scrolling and it jumps 20 pages down and so I'm having a little trouble trying to, I'm following with everything I've read through it, but yeah.
Well, let me throw it out there before asking for the motion again. Is there any more discussion that needs to, to happen, Kylie or Patrick or Jason?
At least on my part, I've been pretty quiet here, but I'm generally satisfied with at least the single family portion. And since we're looking at the duplex portion on its own merits later, I'm, I think everything's been addressed, I, I appreciate everyone's questions, but they're nice sized lots, it's a good growth area, I'm okay.
Yeah, and my question was just around the cul-de-sac versus the street that goes through and in the part that we're not evaluating tonight, if, you know, if that doesn't pass, if it would change anything on this. But I guess that's a, a future consideration for tonight.
And to be clear, I'm sorry to butt in, but I mean, that still has to go through two more readings at the city council level and then, and then, you know, you're, and then there will be something for them to, then the rezoning will take place, just like Ryan was saying. So right now, the only thing, it, it would almost be better if that part of the preliminary plat was, was blank for you, so you didn't have to think about it. But I, I get that that's a little confusing there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of, you know, since it's right between the school and the, you know, it's, it's hard not to consider what's going to happen with.
Right, and, and you can, you can consider that, right? But it's, it's not part of the preliminary plat that's being.
But it's, it's not part of the preliminary plat that's being officially legally put in front of you for your consideration, for your recommendation, one way or another, so.
Um, hey, Ryan, before we get on to this, so thinking back to how you have that trail connecting into the future elementary lot, I mean, thinking about how some of the schools are now, they actually don't even allow, uh, at least the newest one, Grant Elementary, right? So, so students have, have to actually go to the very front of the building to get in off the trail. They, they don't have a back access. So is, is, do you have an idea from the school district that this trail connection is going to be allowed in this case or?
Yeah, you know, I would anticipate it'd be something similar. And my daughter goes to Grant and I ride that path quite a bit. Um, I, I think you'd kind of have something that's, that's along the edge of, of the development with a sidewalk connection. And I, I think what the school board wants is to avoid potential conflict with motorists and kids riding bicycles. So I think what they've told the kids at Grant is, hey, you can, you refine it to ride your bike along that path, but you know, you need to get off your bike and then kind of walk it over to the bike rack. And I would expect that to be the same. What we'd love to see is, is the path kind of go along the west edge of the school board property and then turn east along Hemingway and ultimately connect up to the North Liberty Road bike path. I, I think that would be an ideal situation. Um, we've done a very well job of kind of maintaining separated bike paths here with, with motorists. And Grant and I were talking this week about that, and we think that's a tremendous asset in this community. And, and I think it helps, uh, parents with young kids feel a little bit more comfortable for their kids to ride bikes. And so I anticipate that we would kind of maintain a, a certain level of separation from that path.
So then would that path be the school district's path?
It'd be on their property. I mean, we'll, we'll continue to, like, for instance, the path along the north side, I'm sorry, yeah, the north side of Forever Green Road adjacent to the, um, uh, junior high, right? So the, the school board actually plows that, but it's actually Coralville's responsibility to do that. So, um, you know, Iowa City School District's pretty good about that. We would anticipate that they would, um, maintain that as well. Uh, but we'll, we'll have to get into the development and whether they want to dedicate that. But I, I think our preference as a city would, would have it, you know, have it their property, uh, have a public access easement over it. So the public could access it, but they, you know, maintain it and clear it. But we'll, we'll obviously work that out when, when the design for the school, you know, comes in, when that's forthcoming.
Any other questions or comments?
And I'm happy to reiterate my recommendation if it's hard to get to. So we, we did have one finding, so staff's recommending that the planning commission accept the one listed finding uh, and forward the request for preliminary plat to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the three conditions listed by city staff. It is possible, if you want to right now, to say so moved.
Well, it's that easy. So moved, I, I would echo that some.
All right.
I think I, I've learned that I probably need to, to do this every time now. Sorry, Ryan. Will it still need to be seconded though, however?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Heisler, second by Staber. Uh, roll call.
Staber.
Aye.
And a cost.
Aye.
I'm sorry, can you one more time for me?
Aye.
Thank you. Heisler.
Aye.
Kio.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Uh, I can't get my agenda pulled up right now, but I think it's a request to approve a site plan for property located off Jordan and Sarah, right? Staff presentation?
You're on mute.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, here's property location, as you mentioned, southeast corner of Jordan and Sarah. Uh, they are proposing a site plan approval for a little over a ninety-two hundred square foot medical spa and salon, property size approximately one acre. Uh, here is the existing zoning, uh, it's highway commercial district. C two, C two A zoning list office building and health clinics has permitted uses, so the use is permitted. Uh, the comprehensive plan, future land use designation is commercial, so the zoning is consistent with the commercial land use. Uh, we haven't received any public input on the request. Um, approval standards, the site plan approval standards is one sixty-five, one sixty-five point oh four two of the North Liberty Code. Uh, and so that's what we review these site plans in accordance with. Um, and here's the site lays out. I, I actually was, from a planning perspective, very impressed with the way this property was configured. Um, we kind of can call this a pedestrian oriented design. Um, you, you have the building that's kind of pushed up to the street, uh, which you, you don't very often see. Uh, dedicated pedestrian walkways from, uh, Jordan Street, uh, in two locations here and here. Uh, allows for entrance to the building, uh, connects to the walkway along here. And this walkway ultimately connects to Sarah Court. Uh, didn't have to even ask for a, a bike rack here. And so, uh, really trying to accommodate all modes of, of transportation, being the pedestrian and the cyclist, as well as the automobile. Uh, fifty parking stalls in here. Um, and, and as I mentioned, very, very thoughtful design with respect to accommodating pedestrians and motorists. So, and actually they have kind of two entrances here, one in the, one on the east side of the building and then, and then one on the west side, uh, and just, so that's, that was pretty, pretty neat. Um, kind of the general concerns when you look at a site plan is compatibility with the adjacent residential properties to the east. Uh, we do have residential development over here. Um, and so you look at those things like, uh, proposed screening. Um, I can't tell you, let's see, go to the next. It, it might bog down on me too, but, um, the one thing that we did notice is along the east side of the development, uh, actually, I'm just going to go back. Uh, the trees that you see here, uh, are existing and the landscaping provided kind of filled in that area. Uh, I provided a kind of a bird's eye view of what those are, um, but they're actually drove by there today and those trees are actually filled out pretty well. So they were planted several years ago, they're probably, they're probably above 10 feet, if not higher than that. So pretty, pretty well established, um, buffer here, uh, and they're going to, and fill that in as well. Uh-oh. There we go. Uh, another concern is, is parking lot screening. So they do have berms here, which is consistent with our code. Uh, you see berms in, in different locations here with planting. So that satisfies our, our parking lot screening, uh, as well as they have interior landscape islands to satisfy that. Uh, let's see if I can get my. Hopefully mine will come up too, I'm not sure what's happening. Um, while this hopefully comes up, uh, building design was a, uh, almost all masonry, um, had wood accent panels on the east and west elevations for architectural interest. Uh, the building will have awnings and a pergola, that's not what I want. There we go. Uh, building would have awnings and a pergola, uh, on the, uh, east and west elevations, providing additional interest. Um, window glazing on all elevations, uh, which is very nice, uh, but more so on the west and north elevations that face the street. Um, they did have a site photometrics plan, um, in the packet that satisfies our code. Um, but very minimal, um, lighting intensity. Um, I think the highest foot candle number I saw was four point nine. So, so really it's very compatible with, with an adjacent residential. You don't have very bright lights, uh, that, that will kind of impose on adjacent residential homeowners. So we did have two findings, um, that the use of the property would be consistent with the current zoning and the comprehensive plan, a designation of commercial. And the site achieves consistency with North Liberty Code of Ordinance is one sixty-five oh four two site plan requirements. Uh, and a lot of the design standards that I discussed are in one sixty-nine point one two. So, uh, staff found that the site, proposed site plan meets those. So we are recommending that the planning commission accept two listed findings and forward the request for site plan approval uh, to the city council with a recommendation for approval with no special conditions. And that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Ryan. Is there an applicant presentation tonight?
I know I saw a couple representative here, so they should be here.
Yeah, this is Kelly Beckler from MMS Consultants. Um, I, I don't really have a presentation to make. Uh, Ryan did a, a great job of presenting our site. Uh, I, I think everything is, like he said, well thought out, meets your code, meets your requirements. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I will say, uh, the architect, there's a representative from the architect down here as well. And, uh, if he's got anything he'd like to add, uh, I'd certainly welcome that as well. So please let me know if you got any questions.
Thank you, Ryan and Kelly. This is Michael. Um, I would point out, uh, materials have not changed on the elevations, but they're going through color considerations. Um, but in terms of the ratios and the materials that were shown on the elevations that you just discussed, uh, it will be, um, what is there? I just wanted to point that out for clarification.
Thanks, Kelly. Thanks, Michael. Uh, Ryan, you had mentioned we hadn't received any public comment. I just wanted to ask one more time, did we get any since then?
We have not received any.
Okay. Uh, questions and comments from the commission?
I think it looks nice. And I think it'll fit in quite nicely.
It looks like a good plan.
Ryan, can you talk a little bit about how, so I'm thinking specifically about the lots that are to the east? Can you talk about how, uh, people may be informed of this? Right, like, so I asked for public comment, but how do people find out about this if we don't have neighborhood meetings? Cause this wouldn't warrant one, but.
Yeah, you know, site plans are a tricky one, um, because, you know, we, we don't really solicit public input like we would through a rezoning. And, and, and the reason I think is because really what you're doing is, is looking this and looking at this and reaffirming, uh, with, with the help of city staff, if it meets city code requirements. And so, you know, they have the zoning in place. They have, you know, the, the standards by which that are in our code, that if they meet those standards, um, you know, ultimately, we, we are as, as an entity, as a city, city council is, is compelled to approve the request. And so it becomes very challenging, I think, to, to, and, and I don't want to say we, we avoid public comment on this. Certainly, we, we posted in accordance with state law and, and, you know, posted on our website. But, you know, this would be a challenge if somebody came in and said, you know, we don't like this use here. Um, that would be very challenging from the city standpoint to say, uh, you know, well, we, 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 we always say if, if, if we need additional code provisions to deal with incompatibilities or things like that, we, we need to fix the code. But I, I think that's, in our code, uh, we seek out, uh, good neighbor meetings for rezonings and preliminary plats, um, but, but not normally for site plans, other than posting it on our website and, uh, in accordance with open meeting laws.
Thanks, I just wanted a little refresher. Um, I remember seeing, and I can't find what page it is now, but there was like a headlights screening graphic, I think in the bottom right of one of the pages.
Yeah, I think, I, I'm not sure if I, if I could get to it, because it might be, basically that was the berm.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's going to show it on this or not.
Oh, there we go.
That was the graphic, and this gives you a better idea of what the landscaping is. But that was the graphic that we look for, that, um, parking lot is supposed to be screened. And so we want to see, uh, berms in those locations. So they kind of use that graphic to show kind of have a car parked there that, that it would block, kind of, um, yeah, there it is.
In that, oh, got it.
And so those.
And that berm does not go on the east side of the property?
No, this buffer is actually, for the most part, already planted and it's at grade. But it, the plantings go all the way along the subdivision. So somebody had the fourth foresight, uh, when they planted this to go ahead and start installing trees now, which, which I really appreciate. Um, but the trees planted in there, like I said, are, are above 10 feet. So you would act, you actually have a, a, a better buffer than you would if, if you would to grade out a berm and put, you know, a, a one and a half inch caliber tree in that location. These are actually evergreen trees with a, with a good amount of spread. So it's probably one of the better buffers that you're going to see with a new development.
Got it, yeah, I also drove by today, one of the trees looks a little sad, but the rest looked really nice. Um, I think normally when we see, and maybe I'm making this up, but I feel like normally we also see what the dumpster enclosure looks like. Uh, I'm curious if we know anymore about that, because it is so close to a yard that I don't think has like a wooden fence. I think it has a, a chain link fence, so.
So what we do, and I, again, I, I kind of cut out some of these details with the online package, but it's in your packet. So the, the majority of the dumpster enclosure will be masonry that matches like a veneer of the building, so it's compatible. Uh, what we allow is for the gate to be of a lighter material, just because a heavier material tends to be harder to manage. Um, and so that, that tends to be either a wood or, or, or a, a chain link kind of fence that has some, some sliding over it. But the three sides of the dumpster enclosure will be masonry.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Okay. Um, may I have a motion for our recommendation to city council?
And I'm, I'm happy to reiterate the motion again, I'm, you know, so, uh, city staff, we had two findings. Um, and so we are recommending that the planning commission accept two listed findings and forward the crust, request for site plan approval to the city council with a recommendation for approval with no special conditions.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Patrick, second by Jason, roll call.
Kio.
Uh, I.
And a cost.
Aye.
Staber.
Aye.
Heisler.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Look at us, building, building new traditions here. That's what you get when you get a small group together, the others are missing out. Uh, agenda item number five, may I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
I motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Staber, second by Heisler, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, any old business? Is that a no? Sorry, Ryan, I couldn't hear you if you said anything. Okay, any new business? Kind of talked about some.
The only thing I'd like to talk about is, um, we are getting ready to send out a request for proposals, uh, for, uh, to solicit a consultant for a comprehensive plan rewrite, which is exciting for a planner. I mean, uh, it's awesome coming to a new community and city council identified it as one of their goals to have a new comprehensive plan. So that's, that's awesome. So, um, I'm getting ready to send out an RFP for that. And so, um, it'll be a nationwide search, although I would. it'll be a nationwide search, although I will mention we've got very fine consultants in the state of Iowa that could assist us with that project. But what we're trying to do is align that without with the census data that will be forthcoming. Hopefully, we get that sooner than later, but we all we all don't know. But you know, this is a great time to do have that data and create your comprehensive plan and hopefully looking at those 10 year horizons for update is really kind of a planning goal that I have. So I will most likely be soliciting members here to participate in that endeavor, probably as a advisory or steering committee type, but so that that's forthcoming. That's that's exciting. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, that does sound exciting. How how does it work with, like you said, a planning committee? I'm assuming there would be some sort of listening sessions for the community to share what they want.
Yeah, and you know, we've done a lot of work already, and I'm not saying, you know, with with the community identity exercise, we took up, we took in so much input. And so we're going to draw upon all of these things that we've already done and and kind of create this master document. And and I'd like to kind of say that, you know, if we have a parks plan over here and something over here that they just get incorporated into this master document called the comprehensive plan. I think obviously with COVID, we're going to have some challenges with soliciting public input. I did talk to a consultant that I know out of Des Moines last week. And he said that they've been having kind of the steering committee or advisory committee meetings via Zoom. And he said, actually, actually going really, really well. So you know, we'll have to kind of figure that out. I know with our communications director, we're kind of doing some some sessions where we kind of talk about different projects. And so that that may be an opportunity to do that, but we're we're kind of in charting into kind of a weird area of trying to solicit public input. But we'll, you know, we'll certainly lean on our consultant to do that and and, you know, try and get as much public input as we can because that's just critical to to a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, what you were saying, I think in a previous meeting, how we're having more people attend the neighborhood meetings because they can attend via Zoom. I'm hoping that there will be a lot of participation.
Yeah, I like, you know, we are such a young community and we have busy lives and we have families and and it's hard to break away from your family to attend an in-person meeting. Certainly that works for some, but you know, sometimes you joke that you see the same people there all the time because the people that have you know, just in the middle of trying to get through the day, just aren't able to attend. And so the Arlington Ridge neighborhood meeting was was great. We had more than over 50 people attend. You know, because they could just step away from their family for, you know, 45 minutes and log in. And so it's kind of exciting, you know, it's kind of different, but certainly I think there's good opportunities for that.
Yeah, I think there's opportunity, even when we go back to in person, having a virtual component. I think that just leads to more accessibility for people who can just put the meeting on, put their headphones in and maybe continue working or whatever they're doing. So okay, well, on the note of being able to step away from our families or lives for a little bit, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm motion to adjourn.
I'll second again.
All right, motion by Staber, second by Heisler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're adjourned.